All right, good night everyone. Welcome back to another Bible study session. I hope everyone is good, everyone is well. I hope everybody who is online is good and well. Everyone who is here, give thanks that you have here. And for those who are on their way, we're just gonna ask the Lord to kind of just bring you here safely, guide you here safely. And we just wanna give the Lord our thanks and praise this evening. And we just wanna start off by singing. For the Lord God Almighty reigns. For the Lord God Almighty reigns. Are you Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the Lamb. You are holy, holy. Are you Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb, oh Lord, you are worthy. Worthy is the Lamb. Wherever you are, sing hallelujah. Let's praise the Lord this evening. For the Lord God Almighty reigns. For the Lord God Almighty reigns. Are you Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb, yes, Lord, you are worthy. Worthy is the Lamb. You are holy, yes, Lord, yes, Lord, holy. Oh, are you Lord God Almighty? Oh, worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the Lamb, sing worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. Yes, worthy is the Lamb, worthy is the Lamb. Amen. Amen, 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 amen. From the rising of the sun to the setting of the same. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah to your name. From the rising of the sun to the setting of the same. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah to your name. Because you are worthy, oh God, you are glorified, oh God. You see the ins and outs of our situation, mighty God. We are here to praise you and give thanks unto you, oh God. We are here to lift up your name, oh God, to dive in your presence, mighty God, and know you even more, oh Lord. It is not, it's not about us right now, it's all about you, God. It's all about you, God, and it will never be about anyone else, oh Lord, but you, mighty God. It is a privilege, it is a privilege, it is a privilege, mighty God. Remind us that it is a privilege to be in this country and be able to worship you. It is a privilege to be in this place and worship you. It is a privilege, almighty God, because some don't have that privilege. Some don't have that freedom, mighty Father. Some have restrictions on their worship, on their praise to your name, oh God. But we have the privilege, oh Lord, to honor you. And it's so interesting that those who don't have the privilege or have restrictions, praise your name even so much more, then why should we not, mighty God? We who live in the freedom right now of worshiping your name, of praising your name, of giving you glory and honor, oh God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. For it is to you I give the glory. It is to you I give the praise. For you have done so much for me. And I will bless your holy name. It is to you, holy Father. No one like you. And I will bless your name. Bless your name. And I will bless your name forevermore. Oh, it is to you. It is to you I give the glory. It is to you I give the praise. For you have done so much for me. And I will bless your holy name. It is to you, my holy Father. There's no one like you. And I will bless your name. Bless your name. And I will bless your name forevermore. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Just want to speak to us right now. Just want to speak to us right now as we are talking about stepping into the gifts of the Spirit and the different things, the main foundation of getting into those things, the gifts of the Spirit and the offices or whatever they are. The main thing, the main foundation is worship unto him. The main foundation is being in his presence. And I say that because I know sometimes we come to Bible study or we are online and there are lots of things happening. It's the middle, almost the middle of the week and there are things going on. But I, 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 I challenge us to take this time, this opportunity, this moment to just really tap into the Lord. This time that you have set apart to listen to the Word, to dive into the Word, to really tap into God, to really see his face, to really open your eyes and open your mind. Just put away all the distractions and all the different things around you and be in this moment, be in this place for him to speak to us individually as well as collectively. For him to speak to us, to deal with our hearts, to deal with our issues, to deal with our situations, to give us instructions as to how to move forward in this kingdom that he is creating on this earth. The scripture speaks about the, 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 the earth is mourning and groaning for the manifestation of the Lord through his people. And the only way we can reach that, the only way we can, can, can definitely be successful of that mandate is if we tap into the Lord right now. Right now. So wherever you are, just worship the Lord, hallelujah, worship the Lord. We give you honor, we give you praise, mighty God, because there is none like you. There is none above, there is none beside, mighty God. There is only those below, oh God, that could ever stand against you, oh God. And we want to honor your name. We want to honor you, mighty God, in all that we do, almighty God. Because what you do for us is, 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 is little to nothing off your back, mighty God. What you do for us, we see in some big ways, mighty God. The promotion, the success, the, the, the opportunities are so great and big to us. But for you, it's nothing to do for your children, for the people that call upon your name, for the people that serve, for the people that serve your people, almighty God. In order to please you, we worship you, mighty God, and we honor you, mighty God. We bless your name, oh God. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're altogether lovely. Altogether worthy. Altogether wonderful to me. Here I am. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're together lovely. Altogether worthy. Altogether wonderful to me. And I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that cross. I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that. I'll never know, I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that cross. I'll never know how much it costs to see my sins upon that cross. And so here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're altogether, altogether, altogether worthy. Altogether wonderful to me. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. We thank you, Lord, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We thank you, Lord, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We thank you, Lord, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We thank you, Lord, we thank you, we thank you. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. You know, I just feel in my spirit, we normally take prayer requests. But I really feel in my spirit that I, I just want to take things that you are thankful for. So in the chat, if you have anything to say, if you are thankful for anything, just put it in the chat. And we're just gonna pray, we're just gonna give thanks, we're just gonna give thanks. In this moment, we're just gonna give thanks. I, I honestly believe that spirits need to be encouraged, spirit need to remember. It is in us giving thanks and us being grateful unto God that we remember that he is still by our side, that he still is in control, that he's still taking care of us. Even when we are not sure, even when we don't know what's going on, even when we, we, we can't understand it. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. So let's just give God thanks. Lord, we thank you. Lord, we thank you, we just thank you for our life. We thank you, almighty God, for food, shelter and clothing. Food, mighty God, maybe some of us didn't see what food was coming this week, yet you are providing shelter. We don't know who is almost out of a home, almost out of friends and family to go to, almost out of their ends with. We don't know, but you know, mighty God, and you are still keeping us. Oh Lord, maybe the eviction notice came so long ago, but you have still kept us in this place, oh God. And so we give thanks for your shelter. We give thanks for clothing, mighty God. Some people may have been consistently wearing the same clothes day in, day out. And you have provided, some people remember when they couldn't change the shirt they had, the shoes. Oh Lord, we're giving you thanks, we're giving you thanks, we're giving you thanks. Lord, we're gonna thank you for the vehicles we drive, mighty God, that you are providing it. You are giving it, you are not only helping to maintain it, but you are also making sure that we are going to and fro in safety. Lord, we thank you, almighty God, for the good drivers on the road. We thank you, almighty God, for the persons who are looking out for each other on the road. Almighty God, sometimes we don't even know how near to an accident we may have been. But you know, mighty God, you know the near misses, you know when it was so close. You know when we made foolish turns and, and messed up reversing and all, and stupid parking, mighty God. You know, mighty God, how you protected us in those moments. I thank you, oh Lord, I thank you, almighty God, for those who are still here, almighty God. Some people live in some places, mighty God, they want to run away from. They want to run away from it because, Lord, there is violence, Lord, there is death, there is bloodshed, mighty God. But let us give you thanks that you are still keeping us, you are still protecting us, you are still guiding us along the way, telling us the paths to take and not to take, mighty God. Let us give thanks that you are keeping our families safe and you are keeping our friends safe, mighty God, from all the wickedness that is happening in this place, mighty God, and it's happening in our country. Lord, we just wanna give you thanks for our church members, each and every one of them. Mighty God, we give you thanks for those who make the sacrifice, mighty God, to come and be a part of the assembly. Lord, we give you thanks for everyone that serves, almighty God, that takes the sacrifice to serve, almighty God, in this congregation. Lord, I pray that there will be a beacon of light to others, mighty God. May others want to emulate, may others want to serve because of how they see them serving, almighty God. I pray, almighty God, I give you thanks for the leadership. Oh Lord, only you would have chosen, only you would have set them up where they are now, almighty God. And I continue to give you thanks that you are guiding them and you are giving them wisdom where you see necessary, you are giving them grace. Oh Lord, I pray that you help us to give them grace, almighty God, in the decisions they have to make. It's not easy, it's not, it's not always, you know, what everybody wants. But Lord, as long as it is what you want, it makes sense then, Lord. And so we're giving you thanks for them and we're giving you thanks that you are, you are guiding them and you are keeping them, oh Lord. Lord, I give you thanks, oh Lord, for every youth in this church, oh Lord. As much as we are praying for more and more to come, we are giving you thanks for the ones that are here, the ones that are listening to the Word and hearing your voice through the Word, the ones that are, are being guided by parents who are listening to the Word and hearing your voice through the Word, mighty God. We thank you, mighty God, for the people who come here Sunday after Sunday, Bible study after Bible study, fasting and prayer after fasting and prayer, just standing in the gap for someone else. Standing in the gap for your people, standing in the gap for family members and friends, standing in the gap for people who don't even know that they're being prayed for, mighty God. People who don't even know they are being prayed for, God, we thank you. We thank you. We thank you. We thank you, oh Lord, that you don't treat us as we deserve. That you are slow to anger, oh God, and not quick to wrath. We thank you that you will more lead with a hand of love before a hand of judgment. Because as much as your judgment scares us and terrifies us, it is your love that draws us closer, mighty God. We thank you, mighty God, for that love. We thank you, mighty God, for that love. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your love. And mighty God, even though, I thank you for our pastor. I thank you for our pastor. We thank you for our pastor. We thank you that you still raise him up in this time. For times such as this, we thank you that you are still giving him word and guidance and wisdom. We thank you, Lord, that as much as in himself, he's only doing what he's able to do, that he does his best to obey you, mighty God. We thank you, almighty God, for his grace. We thank you, almighty God, for the love he shows us, knowing that it is a love that truly comes from you, mighty God. We thank you, almighty God, that although this road has not been easy and not all decisions made were the best ones, and not all turns taken was the right turn, that you still gave him the strength, the endurance, the vigor and the willpower, almighty God, to keep trodding on, almighty God. No matter what can be said, no matter what may be done, mighty God, it is truly about being able to keep trodding on despite all that may come and despite all, all that will go. You help him to keep trodding on and we give you thanks for that, mighty God. We give you thanks for that. So as he comes to share the Word once again, mighty God, to dive deeper in your Word, I pray that you give him the necessary tools. You download the spirit of wisdom, knowledge and even foresight, mighty God, to see that which you want him to speak, to open his mouth and share what you want him to share above all else, oh God. We thank you for tonight, we thank you for this time and we bless your holy name, mighty God. In Jesus' name I pray, amen, amen, amen. Good night again, everyone. My name is Brian Beadle and I have done your preliminaries for the night and now we hand over to our pastor, Reverend Everall Edwards.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, those present and those who are on the, on the web, on Zoom. We, I think we've made it clear now that Zoom is the, the alternative to being in church. Amen. And we, we, we can appreciate that some persons might find an evening commute out to church difficult. And you, you have commitments and other constraints, but we still think it is worth the effort to gather face to face in person. Amen. I, I beg you pardon here one minute, let me just sort out something. Tonight, I am, I am under the, the impression that we have not clearly stated a, a series for tonight or for this month of June. And some persons were expecting that the series on, that there was going to be a series on prophecy. Well, last week was the only designated night for dealing with the fundamentals, the basics of prophecy and its function in the church, its history and its function in the church. Tonight, we are going to talk about another issue of concern for the church. And this time, we're talking about sex and the church. Do we cover up or do we go for God's ideals? Now, you and I know that the, the topic of sex is not the most frequently discussed or preached about topic that we can point to in church life. We, it's almost taboo in some places. And yet still, it is a source of great strain on people's walk with God and people's sense of on people's walk with God and people's sense of purpose and fulfillment in life. We, we, we walk with a lot of guilt because we are sometimes listening to what the world is saying outside the media or friends, internet and, and social media. And we've, we're, we're under great pressure. How do we respond in a way that we maintain our integrity? And how does purity become something appealing and fulfilling for us as Christians? It becomes a bigger struggle when at times, we used to be engaged in things that were not so pleasant and didn't match up to what the scriptures standards are. And then we come into church and, and Egypt, the appeals of the old man come back to us. And, and we are, we are perplexed. We, we, we struggle with it. We, we want to look. And, and this is no in-depth. We want to talk from the Bible's perspective on this business of sex. And we want to talk with honesty about the fact that it's a real problem. But because it's a real problem and we serve a real God, we want, we can be honest about it. Amen? Because there is, there is nothing. If, if, I, I said this without any fear of contradiction. If there is anything that you are going through that your God can't deal with, you have a problem. Hello? If God can't deliver you from it, if Him can't deliver me from it, then I have a problem. All right? So that, that is, that is like foundation. That, that is what our challenge is. Again, we said we want to try and be honest. Sexual pleasure is good in itself within the proper context. But it is nevertheless not an essential requirement for human well-being. When, when I was a little boy, no. I don't know if you call, compare to, no, yes, probably a little boy. But, but when I was running around the, the, the track at Calabar years ago. The older boys used to have all kinds of comments to make about oil in your box. Or when you were playing cricket and you would throw the ball from the boundary right up to the wicked keeper, them say, oil in your box. Anybody? Is all right, don't answer. So sexual pleasure is good in itself and of itself within the proper context. We're not denying that it is pleasurable, but within the proper context. Nevertheless, it is not an essential requirement for human well-being. You're not gonna die if you not have it. Hello? Now, if you listen to your world, if you listen to your, 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 your television, if you listen to the movies, if you listen to radio, sooner or later, you are going to get the feeling, say, boy, me and me sold on life if me now enjoy free and wild. Hello? Well, according to, and according to His Way Out Ministries in this article entitled, "An Important Distinction", as pleasurable as sex is, it is not an essential. Essential mean something you can't do without. But our world has told us that something wrong with you if you not want it. Something worse wrong with you if you not have any. Uh? And, and we come to church with that kind of conditioning that says, everybody, I do it, I just that. Uh? We, we go on. To make the point that it is not a, an essential for our well-being. Let's read Matthew chapter nineteen from verse eleven to verse thirteen. And, and again, for those persons who are joining us online over Zoom, we are expecting that you are going to participate. So I know I have wind of some people who are on. So if we call your name, don't feel no way. But Matthew nineteen, eleven to thirteen. You, you, brethren on Zoom, you hear me give you a notice, right? Hello? Sister Shandia, Sister Sharon, Sister Andrea. I, I will come back with some more names later. All right. Who's going to read for us? Bri- Brian, you have a second mic? Brian? You have a second microphone? Hmm. Sister Joan, you can take that. Matthew nineteen, eleven to thirteen.
But he said to them, all cannot accept the same, but only those to whom it has been given. For there are eunuchs who were born thus from their mother's womb, and there are eunuchs who were made eunuchs by men, and there are eunuchs who have made themselves eunuchs for the kingdom of heaven's sake. He who is able to accept it, let him accept it. Jesus bless little children.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Eleven to twelve. All right. No, thank you. It, it's good. Sorry about that. So eleven to twelve is good. Jesus says that there are eunuchs. And we know a eunuch. Now, a eunuch could very well be some, a title. It doesn't automatically mean that the person was incapable or uninterested in sex. That kind of eunuch. The eunuch that Jesus is talking about here, He makes very clear. There are three, three categories. Eunuchs who are born that way from their mother's womb, incapable or not endowed to have sex. There are eunuchs who were made eunuchs by men. They suffered injury. And there are eunuchs who have made themselves so eunuchs for the kingdom of heaven's sake. The person who chooses to live a life of abstention so that they might commit themselves to the work of the Lord. According to Easton's Bible Dictionary, the literal meaning of a eunuch or the role a eunuch played was to be like a chamberlain or a bedkeeper, a housekeeper. And not necessarily, in all cases, one who was mutilated. Although the practice of employing such mutilated persons in eastern oriental courts was common. And we should set references to that in Second Kings, chapter nine, verse thirty-two. Esther, chapter two, verse three. Interestingly, the law of Moses excluded them from the congregation. Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-three and verse one. They weren't accepted into the routine life of Israel if they were so damaged. And we use the word damaged here loosely. Going back to His Way Out Ministries, in an article entitled, "The Question of Morality", stands, me and you live in an age today where some people, for some people, morality has become a matter of personal choice. What is right and wrong depends on what you like or what you don't like. What we really should be asking ourselves is, are the qualities or consequences of sex outside of marriage beneficial or detrimental to individuals and to society? Now, it sounds long, but it is worth thinking about. Because the argument you are getting, we are getting from the right people. The argument we're getting from the liberal people who say, don't get into my bedroom, is that it no matter what me do in my bedroom, it's my business. Uh? And no pastor or no church group, no government, nobody can tell me what is right and what is wrong. I am free to do what I want. And sadly, sadly, some of that argument is creeping into the church of God. Everybody I do it, I just that we not find out yet. God's standards don't change. What we really should be asking ourselves is this. Does it matter whether or not I live pure or not? And I'm going to suggest to us that as long as God is God, it matters. As long as people want to escape hell and get into heaven, it matters. All right. So we have this freedom over here, so do what you want. And we have on this side, people telling you, it no really matter 'cause it's your private business and it's your body. There are three things that we want to spend a little time looking at from scripture tonight about the boundaries that God has set, the effects of violating, breaching those boundaries. And thirdly, how do we get out of the mess? Meaning, how do we make the transition, the move from doing what I want to doing what pleases God? So the three main focus points are the value of the boundaries established by the Creator, the effects of breaking those boundaries, and how do we get out of the mess of breaking, dwelling in on the wrong side of God's boundaries? Firstly, God has given us a foundation for human relations, human sexual relations. He says, Genesis two, verse eighteen to verse twenty-five. Sister Sharon, my, my dearly beloved, would you read for us? Genesis two, eighteen to twenty-five. No? All right. Sister Sharon, present. And still dearly beloved, but not in the same context.
All right, Genesis two.
Eighteen to twenty-five.
Eighteen to twenty-five. The Lord God said, it is not good for the man to be alone. I will make a helper suitable for him. Nor the Lord God had formed out of the ground all the beasts of the field and all the birds of the hare. He brought them to man to see what he would name them. And whatever the man called each living creature, that was its name. So the man gave name to all the livestock and the birds of the hare and the beasts of the field. But for Adam, no suitable helper was found. So the Lord God caused man to fall into a deep sleep. And while he was sleeping, he took one of man's rib and closed up the place with the flesh, with flesh. Then the Lord God made a woman from the rib he had taken out of the man, and he brought her to man. The man said, this is now bone of my bones and flesh of my flesh. She shall be called woman, for she was taken out of man. For this reason, a man will leave his father and mother and be united to his wife, and they will become one flesh. And the man and his wife were both naked and felt no shame.
All right. So look at the boundaries that God has set. God has established in terms of man's need, God's response. Hmm? And the kind of acclaim, the kind of embrace that the man responds to the woman with. And then finally, the, the, the purposes, the boundary that God establishes as to how this man and this woman are going to relate to one another. So firstly, all-knowing, all-wise God says, it is not good for man to be alone. It is not beneficial for man to be alone. God intends that man who is going to be lord over his creation on earth, the one who has the authority to name all the animals, God gives him that authority. God give him the intelligence to know, say, Ryan Nasserus in those point of whatever. Uh? But he has never seen it before. But it shows you the kind of intellect that God, the wisdom that God has given to him. Hmm? And yet still, it is not good for him to be alone. The Amplified Bible says, I will make him a helper who balances him, a counterpart who is suitable and complimentary for him. So with all the experience and knowledge of what animal life is like, God gives him somebody who is suitable and complimentary. Complete him, balance him for a reason. He brings this woman. In fact, after he has fashioned the woman, no, no, don't, don't, don't. You know, at the end age, feminism and the women's lib movement has gotten much of it, i- its acceptance from cutting down what God designed man, male to be. Male man, by virtue of our sin, has lowered himself from just being the representative of God with the authority of God to be just somebody who is, im, im, im a husband. Everybody a husband. And we have abandoned the, the, the responsibility, the authority. And we have abandoned the responsibility, the authority, the sense of being guardian over society till we turn around now and rape the woman them and abuse the woman them who God give it. And we all rape little picnic because we have given place to the devil. So man have the responsibility of naming this, if he going call her a woman. Hello? Hmm? He made it into a woman and brought her and presented her to the man. When you get a present, a gift from God, you are expected to be a good steward of it. Hello? Think about it. It's not just to enjoy and exploit. You are to cherish, Paul says in Ephesians chapter 5, and nurture, nurture. I'm not going myself into trouble, but so be it. Adam says she's going to be called woman because she was taken out of man. Him identify with her. She not just here to be exploited. Flesh of my flesh, bone of my bone. Hello? And then the parameters, the boundaries in which they are to operate. God says to him, "A man shall leave his father and his mother and shall be joined to his wife, and they shall become one flesh." That don't happen overnight for a reason because she is still supposed to be complimenting the man. She is still supposed to be balancing the man. And sometimes me and you, we're different in how we think. And God give you some sense that him don't give me for a reason, so we can complement one another, so we can balance one another. Because sometime we head hot and we act impulsively. Sometimes we don't see things. I hear a lot these days about emotional intelligence. Right time to say what? How to say it? We need one another. Don't want to spend too much time here, sir, but I want to make the point. One flesh, meaning that we are united or supposed to be united in where we're going and how we're getting there. And if we can't complement one another in that, we're going to have problems. But it's still one flesh. And then the beauty of the love relationship that God has designed for us and the purity of it is that they are both naked in this garden and they are not ashamed and they are not embarrassed. Purity. And sometimes we see one another for who each person is. And we start, "I know you made it married." Hello? Eh? Or, or, or we, 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 we... When we not see the makeup and here, so where's my wife? Are the, eh? I see, okay, okay, okay. So again, again, this says that we accept warts and all, faults and all. And we're not ashamed and we're not embarrassed because we're walking in the way that God say. We must walk with love and respect. Recognizing, say, just like women are perfect, you're not perfect. We'll move on. So God made a woman with specific responsibilities and gave her to the man. Then he calls the both of them now together. And he sets up what we understand today to be marriage. Hebrews chapter 13 and verse 4. The Bible says, "Marriage is to be held in honor among all that is regarded as something of great value. And the marriage bed is to be undefiled by immorality or by any sexual sin. For God will judge the sexually immoral and adulterous." Again, a boundary that God has established for sex is within the context of marriage. And the bed undefiled, that means a man have obligation under God cost it what it will to remain pure, undefiled, within the context of marriage. Woman have the same responsibility too. Is it easy? Not if you going to listen to the TV and the radio and WhatsApp and whatever else that is bombarding you with this liberal approach to sex. Third thing, God's moral standard for inheriting the kingdom of God. God's standard demands is another one of the, is another one of the boundaries to be observed. First Corinthians chapter 6 from verse 9 to verse 11. Somebody online going volunteer to read that? First Corinthians 6:9 to 11.
I'm back, sorry about the first instance. First Corinthians 6:9 to 11. "Do you not know that the unrighteous and the wrongdoers will not inherit or have any share in the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived nor misled, neither the impure anymore, nor idolaters, nor adulterers, nor those who participate in homosexuality; nor cheats, swindlers and thieves, nor greedy rascals, nor broke hearts, nor full-blown rivals and sanguivores, nor extortionists and robbers will inherit or have any share in the kingdom of God. And such some of you were, but you were washed clean, purified by complete atonement for sin, and made free from the guilt of sin. And you were consecrated, set apart, hallowed; you were justified, righteous, by trust in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and in the Holy Spirit of our God."
Okay, so we have, we have the long list there of persons who are going to be excluded from inheriting the kingdom of God. Adulterers, fornicators, idolaters, homosexuals. My translation here is amplified. It says sodomites, thieves, covetous, drunkards, revilers, party people. Nor extortionists will not inherit the kingdom of God. Interestingly, interestingly, it's not just homosexuals and sodomites who are not going to get into heaven. Adulterers and fornickers are also not going to get into heaven. So church must stop talk against homosexual... No. We mustn't talk against homosexuality at the expense of talking about or covering up adultery and fornication. Make sense to you? Because of the same sexual sin. The Bible says every other sin outside of sexual sin is outside the body. Sexual sins affect the body. All of them, God's temple.
Adultery is not just for persons who are not married. It also goes for the person who was married, divorced, and then remarried somebody else.
In Matthew chapter 19, Jesus says that the person who is the, implies, let me not say says, he implies, that the person who is offended by the breaking of the marriage vow is free from the commitment to marriage. The one who initiated the adultery, she have a problem. Or him, whoever the case might be. They may have a bigger problem. The person who has been the offended party in that breakup is viewed, understood to be in the clear because it's not them break the vow. Alright? That's where I won't stop on that particular subject for tonight. Second thing, when we get, no, before we go there, when we get ready to come down hard on people out in the world who are committing any of these sexual or moral sins that will prevent somebody from going to heaven, Paul is quick to point out that such were some of you. Whoa. Now, here is where me and you have a problem because you are the worst sinner out there. And we forget that when we did out there, we used to do worse. So we not have no time for nobody who don't come up to our self-appropriated standards. We don't have no mercy and no grace and no patience. We forget that you were washed, you were set apart, and now you are being treated as if you never sinned in the name of the Lord Jesus and because of His Spirit. Because every single one of us can say, if we are honest, temptation come our way. Hello? It's the Spirit of God that keeps us. We're moving on. What time is it? 8:51? 8:51? Let me not ask the question again because I don't want to waste no more time. The effects of breaching these boundaries. What happens when we breach the boundaries? And what are the boundaries again? God make man and woman for a long-term, complimentary, balancing, suitable relationship. That relationship is defined as marriage. It is the only place sanctioned by God for sex. And then if we break those boundaries, then we are endangering the prospects of getting into heaven. And what happens when we break the boundaries? What happens? Well, there is, there is a personal or social impact. And there is a moral impact. It affects me and you in how we relate to one another. So because a man break the lady's heart and then she go try again, and another man break her heart, and then she say, "Me no want no more Jamaican, me want a foreigner." And then she go to foreign, and the foreigner break her heart. After a while, she say, "Me no want no more man," period. So, so the sense of hope for stability in a relationship with a man is damaged. True? Me and you know about them story there. Alright. Well, not only does it affect us in the personal relationship, but it also affects relationships in terms of family because a man stole holy per while oats. And he only reappear when he here, say, she'll graduate with honors from high school or not even high school, university. And then, and my daughter that, you know, my boy that. And then he can also be deceived by not being able to keep his body under. But him want to be a responsible man. And since him can't keep him body under control, him have holy per picnic around the place and he hide from every one of them. So if you see me this month, you know, see me next month end. Because it have to stretch. Hello? If you think it's joke making. I'm going to leave Proverbs 5 from verse 7 to 21 for our own reading because it speaks to us about the lack of self-control, the lack of discipline on the part of a man especially, and how that affects his family. So if you have what you know and can account for and support, they are more likely to become productive and contributing members of the society. You are less likely to go to prison to go be a limb. Hello? I am tempted to go into Proverbs 5 from 7 to 21, but I am mindful, mindful of the time. I want to make the point though that Solomon is speaking now and he's telling, imparting wisdom to the man as to why it is important for him and his wife to enjoy and why it is a blessing provided for the man and his wife that sex is confined to marriage. Him said, "Don't, don't, 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 don't go splash it abroad." Eh? But starting at verse 15, him said, "Drink water from your own cistern of a pure marriage relationship and fresh running water from your own well." Me not have to explain that. Eh? Drink water out of your own cistern. Verse sixteen. Should your children be dispersed? Should your springs be all over the place scattered? Like streams of water in the streets? Not cared for, not supervised, allowed to grow with any sense of right and wrong or discipline? And then we wonder, how the new song gone so, they not no father? Pick me a race, pick me because some man couldn't keep him thing in him pants. Verse seventeen. Confine yourself to your own wife. Let your children be yours alone and not the children of strangers with you. The value again of faithfulness. God is not, God's word, God's spirit is not afraid, not a, not afraid to, to, to recognize the beauty of sexual intercourse between man and wife. Verse eighteen. Let your fountain be blessed with the rewards of fidelity and rejoice in the wife of your youth. Let her be as a loving hind and a graceful doe. Let her breath refresh and satisfy you at all times. It's not Mills and Boons a reading, a reading straight out of the word of God. Always exhilarated and delight in her love. Be exhilarated and delight in her love. In other words, God give it to you, give it to us to enjoy. The world is seeing increasingly, particularly rich, white, western countries, is seeing more and more of same-sex marriage. I feel, and therefore I am entitled, seeing more and more of men in girls bathrooms. AIDS, HIV is still a problem. We are bombarded, so much so that there is a sexual addiction that people don't mention much. There is pornography at, at an epidemic level. There is a confusion as to, am I a boy or am I a girl? What time of day is it? Am I supposed to be boy now, or am I supposed to be girl? Gender confusion. Sexual abuse. Sexual identity confusion. We have a crisis. That's an extract again from speak or act now, or forever regret from his way out ministries. So the problem of broken down the fence affects family, and it affects the, the personal relationships that we are supposed to be preserving and building up. It also has an impact on society and its laws. Let's look at Romans chapter one, verse twenty-nine to verse thirty-two. Paul speaking of those who reject God and don't want God to be mentioned in them school, and don't want no devotions in school. It, it, it must be open to everybody. And anybody can come and have devotions. We don't want to retain the knowledge of God. Paul says, verse twenty-nine, that these, Romans chapter one, these people being filled with all unrighteousness, sexual immorality, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, evil-mindedness. There are whisperers, backbiters, haters of God, violent, proud, boasters, inventors of evil things, disobedient to parents, undiscerning, untrustworthy, unloving, unforgiving, unmerciful, who knowing the righteous judgment of God, that those who practice such things are deserving of death, not only do the same, but also approve of those who practice them. It is a calamitous environment in which to live. If, 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 if this is the dominant way in which people conduct themselves. And more and more, we're seeing it. One time, one time, it was expected that men would be looking out for women. Eh? Now we know in the out business. We just a look man without any kind of restraint. And we, and we, and we look eighty-year-old granny, and we look eighty-year-old baby. Because we don't want to retain no knowledge of God in how we conduct ourselves. It's not a Jamaica problem one. It is glaring for us because we call ourselves Christian country. But it is all over. How do we get out of this mess that we're in? I remember Pastor Earl Wright writing a book, How Do I Get Out Of The Mess That I Am In? Here now. Zig Ziglar, Christian sales advisor, motivational speaker, said this. We are where we are and what we are because of what has gone into our minds. We change where we are and what we are by changing what goes into our minds. He's not saying anything new. Hmm? As a man thinking, so is he. If we feed garbage into our minds, we are going to dwell on garbage. Unlike the computer, people tell us garbage in is not gold that come out, it's garbage out. How do we get out of this mess? Couple of things. Firstly, remember now, Paul, First Corinthians chapter nine. No, First Corinthians chapter six. Going back there quickly. Chapter six, verse nine to verse eleven. And verse eleven in particular, he says, such were some of you, but you were washed. Hmm? Such were some of you, but you were washed. Jesus through His blood can wash anybody and turn them around, worthy of His kingdom. Alright? So the first thing we need to accept, we need to recognize, and we need to repent of the wrong. No matter where you are tonight, no matter how bad you think you have been. First John chapter one, verse eight to verse ten assures us, God cannot lie. Eh? He says, if we say we have no sin, we delude ourselves, and the truth is not in us. If we freely admit that we have sinned and confess our sins, He is faithful and just, true to His own nature and His promises, faithful and just, and will forgive our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. If we say that we have no, we have not sinned, we make God to be a liar, and His word is not in us. So recognize, admit, accept, and turn from the sin. How do we get out of the mess? Secondly, we accept and we extend God's forgiveness to others who are in the predicament now that we were saved from. We forgive. In the same way that somebody was patient and loving towards us and gave us hope through their encouragement, we now have that responsibility. We have the privilege of helping somebody else get out of their mess. Romans chapter eight and verse one and verse two. I know we have one to eleven there, but the, the value of being together with the PowerPoint before us is that we can make notes and read them later. Therefore, there is no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. The ones who are forgiven, who have confessed, and you are now in Christ Jesus, there is no condemnation. You have been set free. For the law of the Spirit of life, which is in Christ Jesus, has set you free from the law of sin and death. The law of sin and death is the bondage to doing wrong that you know that makes you feel so guilty and unworthy. But it take time, some of the time for us to believe and to accept that we are really free because we feel so guilty, so ashamed. But God is already separating you from that life. Amen? The trouble for us is that sometimes He separates us and we can't separate ourselves from it. We feel so bad and sit and say, tell you man, tell you, say what? Which part of you? Hmm? There is therefore no condemnation to them that are in Christ Jesus. Third thing. Our minds are being renewed. Romans twelve, verse one and verse two. Volunteer? Too early?
Therefore, I urge you brothers, in view of God's mercy, to offer your bodies as living sacrifices, holy and pleasing to God. This is your spiritual act of worship. Do not conform any longer to the patterns of this world, but to transform by the renewing of your mind. Then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, is good, pleasing, and perfect will.
Inspiration of the Holy Spirit says that we are to give ourselves over. Not just the mind, not just the spirit or soul, but the body. Eh? So some things where we used to subject our bodies to, him say we must give the whole thing over, all of us. Each of us must give, all of us over to God because it is reasonable service. When you come to value what Christ has done for you and how Him changed your direction, you want to give Him all of what you have. And him say, having given yourself over to Him, you yield to the transformation, renewal of your mind. How do we renew our minds? Obeying God's word? Remember, garbage in, garbage out. Certain channel, we no watch. Certain book, we no read. Hello? Philippians chapter four, verse eight. For the rest brethren, whatever is true, whatever is worthy of reverence and is honorable and seemly, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely and lovable, whatever is kind and winsome and gracious, if there is any virtue and excellence, if there is anything worthy of praise, think on these and weigh and take account of these things. Fix your minds on them. The Amplified Bible explains the transformation of the mind in this way. It is progressive. Eh? It's few baby born and can talk. Hello? Few baby born and can resist breast. Them born sucking. Don't it? Not true? Yeah, man? Progressive. But you know, when you see them sucking less and less, that them growing up, them heading in the right direction. When them stop ball for everything. And you not understanding, you want know or go on. After a while, you hear them say, mama? Is mama them want? Little bit after that, them said, dada. Dada, them say first? Well, well, me, me think it's mama them say first, anyway. Alright. So, so the, the mind is being renewed, it's progressive, and it is being renewed because we are beginning now to think on God's word. And in thinking and imbibing, in receiving God's word, in abiding in Christ, what He wants is becoming what we want. We have a problem again, brothers and sisters, when we are follow Christ, and what Christ want is not what we want. You know, we know there's something wrong. If God's word tell us A, and we are say no, it's Z. And if we find ourselves in situations like that, we must examine whether or not we are walking in the faith. So we, we repent. We're being renewed. We accept the forgiveness of God, and we extend the love of God to others. And now we practice some discipline. Hmm? How that go? Well, Paul was a sportsman, but Paul was also an honest man. First Corinthians chapter nine now, verse twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-seven. He says now, every athlete who goes into training conducts himself with self-control and restricts himself in all things. Him can't a train for Paris, and yet still he want done every mango tree, he see. Eh? Unless a pure mango, he might eat. Him restrict himself, him discipline himself, him eat sensibly, and him sleep early. He disciplines himself. By the way, you know, when, when in Paul's time of writing, when, when, um, when you won at the Olympics, all you get is a olive branch, we can tie around your head, you know? Now we get gold medal and... Now we all get gold medal, and if we broke a world record, we get a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar, and thing on thing, you understand? Paul say everybody are running the race on blue one, get the crown. Down to third, get money. They do it to win a wreath that will soon wither. But we do it to receive a crown of eternal blessedness that cannot wither. Therefore, I do not run uncertainly, I have a definite aim. I do not box like one who is beating the air and striking without an adversary. Shadow boxing, we call that. But like a boxer, I buffet my body, I handle it roughly, I discipline it by hardship, and subdue it for fear that after preaching to others the gospel and the things pertaining to it, I myself should become unfit. I should become rejected as a counterfeit, unapproved. Paul say me discipline myself. So certain people love to talk certain things, and me avoid them certain things there. Certain people love go certain places, me know in a my weak, my weakness, me can't deal with that, so me no go there. Paul says to Timothy, "You must shun the very appearance of evil." He says elsewhere, flee youthful lust, run from them. It's some conscientious decisions we're making because we want to preserve purity and be pleasing to God. Last thing, is there is a place, there is a place for healthy relationships, healthy friendships, healthy counsel. Galatians chapter six, verse one and verse two, he said, "Brothers, if anyone is caught in any sin, you who are spiritual," and spiritual means by the grace of God, by God's guidance, you not fall in other situation there at this point in time. You who are spiritual are to restore such a person in a spirit of gentleness. Keeping a watchful eye on yourself so that you are not tempted as well. Carry one another's burdens, and in this way, you will fulfill the requirements of Christian love, the love of Christ. Now me and you in a foreign culture, I know how church hurt go. Not tell nobody my business before some me go another church. And what we get, rather than growth, is a revolving door. Because me no trust nobody down at the church, if we tell them my business. We go start over somewhere else. And the same place where you go, somebody will leave there to go somewhere else because them can't find nobody off them church to tell them business. You with me? So the most common complaint in church now is church hurt. Hurt, hurt, hurt. And I'm saying to myself, I'm thinking to myself, Father God, help me. So that all when I get hurt, I don't pass it on. Jesus Himself say, "Offense will come." But woe to the one through whom offense comes. Offense will come. And sometimes, we are, we are quick to point the finger and not so quick to remember that such were some of us, such was I before Jesus saved me. Now, we are justified, washed, saved, saved, washed, sanctified, set apart, and we are treated just as if we did not sin because of Jesus, only because of Jesus. We have, we have His Spirit encouraging us and comforting us that we belong to Him. All right. Questions, comments? Anybody, online or here? Comments, questions? Hopefully, we have answers for the questions. Anybody online? Anybody present? What I mean? Me and you, me and you, we tell people we business, and then tell other people. After them commit to it, so you know, pray for your babes. Every prayer meeting, then go them name it, pray for Sister Babe because so and so and so. Yep? Yes? Hold on a bit because we want everybody here just.
Okay, I'm saying. In here, it is said, pray for Sister Babe.
Yes.
Sharon was here, and Sharon here, pray for Sister Babe. Maybe I had an issue, and I said it to Sharon. And you know say, one babe say X Y B. And possibility be, I am coming into church. And you see the eyes, I'm a flick over there, so.
Yeah.
Me no understand what is going on, what is when me tell Sharon and the clean. You hear what church hurt is, brother? But this brother don't understand what church hurt is, so.
Yes, yeah, I might tell you that. Yep, but there are different, there are different ways of it happening. Because a church might decide to deal with a particular matter. It look to us like it's the same matter. But the circumstances are different. And the church, the church might weigh the thing. And say, in the interest, given how things go. But all me know is that it look to me like them treat you different from how them treat me. So me gone because them no fear. And me no accept how them treat me because how them treat me different from how you look to me to get treated.
Yeah, but can you see, with what is happening around, especially now, it is easier for somebody who just coming in, no say, the bungalow people there, a friend. And me no really wanna associate with them, and they look like they with chat people up at the church there. So me a go go down a pastor brown church.
Yeah, but if you, if you, look here, me and you, me and you can't, can't. It is not reasonable, it is not fair to just look on Sister Sharon and say, she look like she reach at people. Or look at Sister Drone, just look at her and say, them no talk to people like me. That is judging. That is the negative kind of judging where you form an impression of somebody without any encounter with them. I remember a couple of years ago, youngster just start work, and a group of ladies came into the canteen, and at the table beside me, a lady said, "Me no like her, you know?" Me say, "You talk to her? You know her? What she do you?" "Me no know her, me no like her." Form an impression of the person, and what she must expect of the person, and she do even know the person.
Can I tell you pastor? When I came to Spanish Town, on a Sunday, Spanish Town full of people because you had the two bands, we carried it, they'd go number five. I heard there were two ladies standing on the side of the road. One saw a lady coming up in the procession, you see that woman, they may eat her, me no like her. A lady said to her, I say, "What she do you? Lady lady, she no do me nothing, but me not even need trade with make her clothes, me no like." Can I tell, can I tell you pastor? The lady who asked the question, it was her daughter coming up. So simple. So simple, and I can just imagine how she want that the earth, if open and take her in because it's her mother asked the question.
Yes.
And she says she no, the other not, but she hit the very ground she walk on. So you see, people can just see her, and.
Look here. Again, it going sound simple, but it is very, very real. The enemy of God's church is the enemy of your soul and mine. Eh? Him don't want this to flourish. Him want division, because in division, him can have a field day. And we come here, and we badmouth one another, and we treat one another bad. And then we want to, how come the church not grow? And, 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 and again, bearing in mind, don't judge. Because the same way you judge is the same way you are going to be judged. The same way you extend mercy is the same way you are going to be extended mercy. Probably, if we remember that, we would be a little slower to come to a conclusions. And nine times out of ten, the conclusion wrong. Let's stand. Sister Drone, can we ask you to closing prayer for us?
Eternal Father, we just wanna thank you for tonight. We just wanna thank you, Lord, for taking us here and helping us, Lord Jesus Christ, to hear your words. Almighty Father, you are the God of heaven, the God of earth, and the God in control of everything that was said. We thank you, Lord God, for blessing our pastor so that he, Lord, could have given us the word. Lord God, we thank you for him, and we thank you for every word that came out of his mouth, every word that was spoken. We thank you, Lord God. Help us to learn, to understand these things, and to use them as a daily guide towards our Christian life. Lord, we also want to thank you for the offering, Lord. Bless each person that had it to give and those who did not have. Lord God, I leave everybody completely into your hands. And as we go, Lord God, we ask you for your guidance and your protection and the covering of your blood upon our lives. As we ask you these mercies and tell you thanks in Jesus' name.
Have a good night, everybody.